Good morning, everyone. This is Dr. Val Arkush, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and I am pleased to welcome you and call to order the December 17th, 2020 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. As always, we will begin with Commissioner's comments, and I have several this morning. First of all, just wanted to do a quick update on the coronavirus, which continues to rage in Montgomery County. We have been in the midst of a post-Thanksgiving surge, which has produced our highest number of daily cases ever, filled our Montgomery County hospitals, and resulted in 34 deaths just in the last week. My team is cautiously optimistic that this surge is coming to an end, and our new case numbers are leveling off. But this leveling off is in the hundreds of cases per day, not the 20 or 30 per day that we had back in the summer. As you consider your plans for the upcoming holidays, please keep your celebrations within your household. Remember our hospital workers and other frontline workers, who need all of us to do everything that we can to reduce the chance of spreading the virus in our community. The CDC states that over 50% of viral spread is by people without symptoms. It is critical that we continue to wear masks and maintain social distance anytime that we're outside of our homes. There is light at the end of this tunnel. Vaccine is arriving at our Montgomery County hospitals this week and next week. This vaccine will be used to vaccinate frontline hospital workers. But none of our hospitals are getting enough vaccine with this first delivery to vaccinate all of their workers. They are having to make priority lists even within the hospitals. We do not have a date certain as to when our hospitals will receive additional vaccine or how many doses. We also expect that CVS and Walgreens will be receiving doses in the very near future that will be used to vaccinate residents and staff in long-term care facilities in Montgomery County. In a few short months, there will be safe and effective vaccine available for our community at large, but we do need to hunker down between now and then. I have a quick update on last night's storm. As of this morning at 9:00 a.m., we have eight and a half inches of snow in Norristown, per the National Weather Service in Mount Holly. We have thankfully less than 80 customers without power. There were 273 vehicle accidents reported so far. There are 202 disabled vehicles out on our roads, so please be extremely careful if you do have to go out. Yesterday, our 911 call center received 1,109 calls just between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. And currently, there are no significant road closures. We want to thank all of our public safety officials and first responders for their work overnight, as well as all of the municipal workers that were out plowing the roads. Residents should still continue to stay home as we complete our road cleaning operations. So now I want to take a few moments to recognize two longtime staff members who will be retiring in the new year. Each of the departments that they lead have also achieved significant accomplishments this month, a fitting tribute to their leadership. First up, I am going to recognize Tom Sullivan, Director of Public Safety. Hired in 2002, Tom has been a leader in modernizing our public safety operations and integrating the work of the many agencies that serve our 62 municipalities. One of the most tangible examples of Tom's leadership and in coordination with hundreds of partner agencies. The county recently completed a transition to a new countywide radio communication system. The new system features 10 additional tower sites strategically located across the county, bringing the total number to 30. This expansion allows for both increased redundancy and capacity. This new communication system ensures a seamless connection between all 52 police departments across 12 dispatch zones, our 19 Montgomery County Emergency Medical Services Agencies, and the more than 90 fire companies and departments. Prior to this, communication between police departments was not reliable, even in an emergency. Director Sullivan led the department's response to countless complex incidents and planned events, including Hurricane Irene, Tropical Storm Lee in 2011, Hurricane Sandy in 2012, the Papal Visit in 2015, the Democratic National Convention in 2016, and the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020, along with hundreds of winter storms, flooding events, plane crashes, hazardous materials incidents, and fires. Tom also served as chairperson of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Task Force and led a coordinated effort in planning, training, and operations among Bucks, Chester, Delaware, Philadelphia, and Montgomery Counties. On a personal note, I want to thank Tom for everything that he has taught me about the workings of our Public Safety Department and how it integrates with federal, state, and local agencies. Tom was supposed to retire earlier this year, but deferred his retirement when COVID hit. His steady leadership, expertise, and professionalism has been enormously helpful to me and without question contributed to an integrated and forward-looking response to this pandemic that has saved many lives. Tom, you will be sorely missed, and I want to thank you for your service. Now I'd like to say a few words about Warden Julio Alguerin, who has been with the county since 1974 and will also be retiring next month. During his more than four decades with the county, Warden Alguerin has held every rank at the correctional facility, a very impressive achievement. Under his leadership, he has embraced technology advances to assist outside law enforcement agencies, opened the door to the mental health community, and advanced multiple criminal justice initiatives. He has also welcomed multiple county departments to provide services to the incarcerated population. Under Warden Alguerin's leadership, the correctional facility has embraced job training programs, mental health services, improvements in family visiting services, cutting-edge supports and services for individuals with a substance use disorder, and growing reentry services for inmates returning to their communities. When I first became a commissioner, the warden flagged for me problems with re-enrolling inmates in Medicaid upon release that led to difficulty in their maintenance of medications and access to other health services. Working with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, this issue has now been resolved. The work that correctional staff under the helm of Warden Alguerin has done over the years to keep our inmates as healthy as possible, and more recently to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the correctional facility, has been extraordinary. And his work has helped to keep the case counts low. We are extremely pleased to report that, under his leadership, the Montgomery County Correctional Facility has received its fourth accreditation certificate from the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare for compliance with the NCHS's Standards for Health Services in Jails. We thank Warden Alguerin for his dedicated service, and I will deeply miss his leadership and commitment to public health and safety. And finally, I want to speak directly to our entire county family. The county has also had to skip many beloved traditions this year, including gathering to light the menorah, Christmas tree in Canara, and the annual concert by our courthouse chorus. Although we cannot be together, I want to personally thank you for all that you have done during this most difficult year. This year's been unlike any other in our memory, and the way that our employees have stepped up to serve the residents of Montgomery County has truly been remarkable. In order to carry out our public health and public safety responsibilities during this pandemic, the county has had to hire significant numbers of staff, create a substantial countywide testing structure, create multiple information platforms, enable numerous staff to serve constituents remotely, and create the infrastructure to securely conduct an election that saw 244,000 people vote by mail. This is in addition to all of the core services that the county already provides. We were only closed for two days at the beginning of the pandemic and have been operating continuously ever since. This is due to the incredible resilience and dedication of our employees. Many of our staff cannot work from home and have continued to put themselves at risk every day to serve our residents. I want everyone to know how hard our staff have worked this year. It has not been easy. Our employees in public safety at the youth center, working at the prison, and the coroner's office, just to name a few, continue to work around the clock to keep us all safe. Our employees are our neighbors, family members, and friends. Together, we have persevered through the stress and loss brought on by this pandemic. I'm here to say that we appreciate everything that you have done to keep going and bring us to this point. Every step of the way, our employees have risen to the challenge, and I want to commend every one of you for your dedication during what has been such a difficult year for everyone. One of my favorite events each year is our employee PIN ceremony. In regular times, we would host an event to recognize the years of service milestones that our staff have achieved within the county. However, this year, we are sending the PINs by mail to each employee since we are not able to gather in person. This year, we have 225 employees receiving PINs. The breakdown of their service within the county is as follows. We have 51 employees that are celebrating 10 years employed by the county, 55 employees who are celebrating 15 years employed with the county, 55 employees who are celebrating 20 years employed with the county, 30 employees are celebrating 25 years employed with the county, 22 employees are celebrating 30 years employed with the county, 10 employees are celebrating 35 years employed with the county, and two very special employees are celebrating 40 years as part of our county family. Congratulations to everyone celebrating a milestone this year. Your PINs will be to you shortly. And once again, thank you to our entire workforce of county employees for the service you provide each and every day. I send my warmest wishes to you and your family for the holiday season, and know that there are brighter days ahead in 2021. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Good morning. Thank you, Val. Very well said, and I echo that for all of our employees. I do want to shout out our roads and bridges crews who have been out since yesterday and all night keeping our roads clear, our bridges clear, and also all the municipal workers who have been out in the storm. They don't have the option to stay home, so we thank them for clearing the roads. First, I'd like to share some hopeful news for our restaurant and food service industry that we know are struggling right now with the new COVID restrictions. We recognize the importance of this industry as a cornerstone of Montgomery County's economic and workforce development, as well as central to the growth of entrepreneurship, job opportunities, and our communities. And that's why I am proud to announce that the Board of Commissioners is making available an additional $5 million in county economic development funds to support restaurants and other food services businesses as we move through this next phase of the COVID-19 pandemic. To date, we have awarded nearly $20 million in carers funding to Monco businesses and nonprofits struggling. This wave will be specifically for the restaurant and food service industry. Applications for the Monco Strong 2021 Restaurant Grant Program will open on Wednesday, December 30th, and close on Wednesday, January 6, 2021, right around the corner. Information is available on our website right now. Grant awards for each qualifying business will be $10,000. And this program is being jointly administered by the Montgomery County Commerce Department and the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County. So we encourage restaurants and other food service businesses in need of support to look into this latest round of a funding and apply on December 30th. Our Commerce Department will be available to assist anyone with questions. And more information can be found at moncopa.org/commers. And now I want to share some of the mental health resources that are available for our county residents. We know that we've all gone through months of adhering to CDC guidelines and physically distancing from friends, family, neighbors, staying with just the members of our household to reduce the spread of COVID-19. And we know that it's taking an emotional toll. There's no handshakes, no hugs, no gatherings, and this new normal does not feel normal at all. And as a result, many of us are experiencing a greater and greater sense of isolation and loneliness. And then we have the added concerns to the economic fallout that has been the result of this pandemic, fear of becoming infected, inconsistent messaging about the virus, and, as Val said, vaccines are coming, but not soon enough. And we're now in the holiday season, which can always exasperate negative emotions and triggers during the best of times. So we want our residents to know that we care about you, and there are several resources for you if you are struggling emotionally or in crisis. The state of Pennsylvania's Mental Health Support Line, Warm Line, will connect you with a free crisis counselor and can be reached toll-free at 855-284-2494. And the Montgomery County Mobile Crisis Support is also available 24/7 for anyone experiencing depression, suicidal thoughts, and it also provides peer and teen support services. You can call 855-634-4673 toll-free or visit www accesseservices.org for more information. While we are continuing to ask everyone to physically distance from individuals outside of their household during the holidays, remember that you can stay in touch with friends and loved ones in other ways, whether it's Zoom, FaceTime, Skype, or just a plain old phone call. Please reach out to someone, especially during the holiday season, and check in to see how they are doing. If you haven't been outside today, winter is definitely here. There is snow on the ground. And we recognize that there are many in our communities who struggle to find adequate food, among other things, during this time of the year. This year, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the need is greater than ever, and demands on safety net organizations have skyrocketed. According to a 2018 Feeding America study, 9.5% of Monco residents are food insecure, and 12% of those residents are children. Over 51,000 residents are receiving benefits from the Supplemental Nutrition Program SNAP. And due to COVID, we know that these numbers have grown. So far this year, the 34 Monco Anti-Hunger Network member food pantries have seen an increase in volume, in some cases, double or triple, especially in the spring when nonessential businesses were closed. The recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, along with the economic consequences, could take years, putting an even greater strain on these resources. We need your help to find, help to find those vulnerable families, individuals, seniors, and children enough nutritious food to eat during the harsher winter weather, winter months. Here's what you can do. You can make a monetary donation towards food online or by check to the Montgomery County Anti-Hunger Network. They will use the money to purchase food for local pantries. Visit www-moncoantihunger.org for more information. And you can also volunteer to provide meal deliveries and stock food pantries through RSVP by calling 610-834-1040. All food providers are practicing heightened hygiene practices, encouraging volunteers to stay home when they're sick, modifying routes to use fewer volunteers, and providing frozen meals. So if you have the capacity or resources during this holiday season to help another family in need, remember that we are all neighbors, and we're all in this together. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Gail, do you have any comments?
No, I have no opening comments, Commissioner Arkush. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Francisco, do we have any individuals who wish to provide public comment?
Yes, we do have one person. I will unmute you one by one after raising your hand. First, we will have Carmina Taylor.
Part of that, perhaps I should read the rules?
Yes, Mr. Stein, would you please read the rules? Sorry about that.
No problem. All speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior of any sort, including arguing with the county solicitor once he has made a determination on whether a matter is germane or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down shall be grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without any further warning or admonishment. As always, the commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. And just to clarify for anyone who's interested in giving comment this morning, the first comments should be on matters appearing on today's agenda, and then that will be followed by general public comment. All right, so with that, Ms. Francisco, I'll turn back to you.
Great, thank you. First up, we have David Morgan. David, you are now unmuted.
Good morning, Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan, I'm showing that you are unmuted. We cannot hear you if you are speaking. Okay, Mr. Morgan, we will come back to you and see if we can get those audio issues worked out. Next, we have Carmina Taylor.
Good morning, Ms. Taylor. And I see your note. Is this, is this general public comment that you're providing?
Yes, it's not on the agenda, so I can wait.
No, I think, I think actually you're fine to go ahead at this time. Thank you.
Okay. So my name is Car-
Ms. Taylor, you are muted again, so if you could just unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Ms. Taylor, you can proceed.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't know this. Okay. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Carmina Taylor, and I'm the co-founder and advisor for the Movement for Black and Brown Lives in Montgomery County. This group was created to be the Montgomery County Black Lives Matter answer to any publicly elected officials making disparaging remarks about the black and brown community. Recent history has demonstrated that our own Republican County Commissioner made such disparaging remarks about the black and brown community regionally and nationally, but has apparently forgotten the acute disparities that exist in a county he is responsible for oversight, even as a minority member of the commissioners. We are here to hold him accountable. The movement for the black and brown lives in Montgomery County is also focused on three public policy and accountability issues that still hinder our communities from fully thriving. We are visually bait, we are visually focused, visually, visitantly focused on empowering our communities to, one, advocate for educational equity in their school systems; two, to address the infant mortality rate disparities among black women in our county, which dramatically influences and impacts our family ecosystems; and, three, to address the institutional racial systemic practices that disproportionately house our children in the juvenile detention center. We come here today to seek a partnership with your office and the Public Health Department to address the disparities with infant, with the infant mortality rate of black women. The time to- This is the time to forge with a public community group that solely strives to serve the community with altruism and execute real solutions to improve the quality of life for the most ignored segments of our society. We are specifically requesting a meeting with the three of you to comprehensively devise a realistic plan that fully is integrated in the best interest of black women in Montgomery County. We are the anchors in our families, in our workplaces, and places of worship. We are women that produce black magic all day. Yes? Oh, I thought- Oh, I thought- Am I able to email my comments?
Yes.
All right, I apologize. I apologize, but I thought in the general public comments, I looked at the guidelines. I said it, I thought it said you had up to five minutes, but in the-
On our current guidelines, it's two minutes.
I apologize, Mr. Stein.
That's a point all right. Thank you. Do we have any other general public comment?
It does not appear we do at this time.
Madam Chair, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. We will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the November 19th, 2020 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Mr. D'Orton, the 2021 budget.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so to begin, as you know, the preliminary or the proposed 2021 budget was presented on November 19th. Following that, we held two public hearings on December 3rd. All those documents have been posted out on the county website since November 19th. That would be the complete operating and capital budgets and the presentation that was made. And today, you're scheduled to adopt both the 2021 operating budget and the capital improvement plan. The numbers are unchanged from what was presented on November 19th, although I am going to walk through some of those slides with you again and just highlight some of the key points. So, starting with the 2020 general fund year-end projection, you can see that we began 2020 with a budget plan structural drawdown of $9 million. As of now, the forecast for 2020 is showing that we would finish the year, if everything holds true, with revenues in excess of expense of $17.8 million. That's primarily driven by a projected- That's primarily driven by a projected $24 million of one-time revenue for reimbursement of eligible costs relating to the COVID-19 pandemic this year. That's 100% CARES Act funding. As I said, it is a projection at this time based on preliminary information that we have on the program and our cost. You know, there'll be months after the year ends that we'll be reconciling this program and will be under audit and so forth. So, as we move into the new year, I'll provide more updates on the CARES Act funding and where it actually will end. But for the time being, in the proposed budget, this is the projected amount that we feel will come back into the general fund as reimbursement. If that was to happen, and we did nothing else in 2020, we would finish the year with a fund balance of about $110 million. Kelly, could you turn to the next slide? Thank you. So, turning to the 2021 budget, without adding any new revenue to the 2021 proposed budget, you can see that the ending performance is projecting a $17.1 million structural budget deficit. Our revenues are $25 million higher. That's primarily attributed to $21 million of committed funds to the Public Health Department to deal with the pandemic and other things associated with it going into the new year. That also has an expense offset, so you can see expenses are up by $33 million. You know, 21 of that is primarily attributed to the grant funding that we're expecting to continue. That's the only known source of funding at the moment that the county is aware of in terms of funding that we could use to deal with the continuing management of the pandemic and vaccination. So, we're paying close attention to the federal and state government, but as of today, we don't have any new information about new funding or anything else with the CARES Act funding. As far as we know, at the end of the year, the CARES Act funding expires and all expenses and commitments are to be made by December 30th. And that's the planning that we've been following throughout the past six to seven months. So, I had outlined a budget balancing recommendation that staff put forward on November 19th. I'm just going to walk through the primary steps to get the budget balanced and arranged that we think meets the fund balance policy and is a good fiscal plan for the county. So, the first is to take $14.5 million of the projected 2020 ending fund balance and assign it to future pension and debt service costs in 2021 and beyond. These are costs that we know the county will incur and our liabilities that we'll have to deal with in the years ahead. The second major step is the recommendation to raise the county's real estate tax millage rate by 5%. That's only the portion for the county operations. Montgomery County Community College tax rate would remain unchanged. If this proposal was approved, that would raise $10.5 million of new net real estate tax revenue in 2021. Turning to slide six. The final step would be that we would have a planned budgetary drawdown of $6.7 million. That would be the the net deficit based on these two steps being taken. And if we turn to slide seven, it's a little bit easier to follow this. I'll just outline how that impacts our financials. So, the first step is, obviously, our forecast projections, as they've been proposed in the budget, come out the way that we anticipate. And then, the second step would be that in the future, before we close the 2020 books, that would be during the audit period, likely in the months of May, June, the board would take an action to assign $14.5 million of the 2020 financial performance or ending fund balance for future pension and debt costs. If that all came out the way that we we think, it would and it would leave us with an ending fund balance of about $96 million, which is just under 22% of the projected operating revenues. Carrying that forward into the 2021 proposed budget, step three is the addition of the new real estate tax revenue based on the 5% millage increase. That would raise about $10, $10.5 million. And then, step four is the structural drawdown, $6.7 million of fund balance to get us in the range, in the goal range of our fund balance policy of 18 to 20%. You can see that if this all worked out the way it's forecasted, we would end up the year with a fund balance of $89 million, which is roughly just under 20%. I will note that that fund balance level, although it meets our fund balance policy, is still behind the national median for AAA counties around the country, as has been noted by Moody's, which is roughly about 33%. Turning to slide eight. So, this is just a snapshot of what the overall budget would look like if all these steps are approved in the budget as they've been proposed. And you can see that it would take our fund balance in in a range that we staff feels comfortable with in terms of what the fund balance policy states and projects. Turning to the next slide. Thank you. So, if the budget was adopted as proposed, you would be approving a general fund revenue budget of $455 million. Kelly, could you turn to the next slide? As I mentioned, that includes a 5% real estate tax increase. It would raise the county millage rate to 3.632 mils. And the impact on the average single family, which has an estimated market value of about $362,000 in Montgomery County, is about an additional $29 annually. You can see that, based on the current rate, the average single-family dwelling pays about $670, $17 overall for the county operation fund. Okay. Kelly, could you turn to the next slide, please? On the expense side, we would have projected expenditures of about $462 million in the general fund. As you can see, a large portion of that is in our health and human services budget, roughly 40%. Next slide, Kelly. So, that covers the the high level on the general fund revenue and expense. I did want to outline a new program that's been proposed, and it's a real estate tax deferral program, which provides eligible homeowners the opportunity to defer- sorry- to defer the county real estate tax millage rate increase in 2021. And here's how it would work. So, homeowners must be 65 years of age or older in 2021. They have to have an annual household income of up to $35,000. It does require property ownership and payment of the county real estate tax in 2020, which would be the base year. It provides the option to defer a county real estate tax increase in 2021, which in this case, as proposed in the budget, would be a 5% increase. So, the amount that would be over and above the 2020 base is the amount that could be deferred. So, the program provides that the deferral amount will require the county to file a real estate lien against the property for future collection of the tax when the property changes ownership. It has no fees or interest charges associated with it. The lien just sits out there so that the tax is collected eventually when the property changes hands. So, no, no impact from a cost perspective to the homeowner. Kelly, could you turn to slide 13? So, we tried to look at some data to see, you know, who might be eligible out there in Montgomery County. And we looked to the to the Commonwealth's Property Tax Rent Rebate Program, which is structured similar to the the program we're we're proposing here, that the county's proposing. It provides eligible homeowners an annual rebate of up to $600. It has the same income requirements as as the proposed county real estate tax deferral program. So, based on 2019 census data, Montgomery County has 26,000 householders that are 65 years of age or over with annual income of $35,000 or less. In 2018, and this is based on data published by the DCD, there were about 8,800 households that qualified for the state's rebate program. And as I said, they have the same requirements, 65 years of age or greater, and $35,000 of household income. So, that's that 8,800 is approximately 33% of the county's eligible census population if if we're using the 26,000 householders. Can you turn to the next slide, Kelly? Thank you. So, 75% of the county's single-family parcels have an estimated property market value under $414,000. On average, in that group, the real estate assessment is about $124,000 with a market value of $264,000. Utilizing the data from the state's program, which I just, you know, mentioned in the previous slide, county homeowners that are eligible, age 65 or over with an income less than $35,000, could be eligible to defer approximately $21 of the real estate tax in 2021. And that's all the 5% increase. It's all based on projections, you know, with the data that that I'm outlining here. So, you can see in the chart below, we actually broke it down into household income. That data comes from the state based on, you know, their their program. But we used our average assessed value in the in the lowest tier, under 414 or 0 to 414,000. You can see, based on that, the average county real estate tax bill paid in 2020 is about $429. With the 5% real estate tax increase, that would be $450. So, that's where we come up with the $21. It could be less, it could be more, depending on the actual assessment of the of the householder. So, if you look at that from the high side and you calculate if everybody, you know, that participated in the state program, participated in the county's program, it could be a total deferral of about 200,000. That's a that's an extremely aggressive amount. You know, I I think that it will take some time to educate our community on the program and based on, you know, other other governments that have implemented this similar program. It's, you know, one that people really have to get an understanding before they participate versus the state program that's been around for a long time. And, you know, we even have, you can see by the stats that, you know, we're only, the the state's only capturing about a third of what we think is the eligible population for that program. So, education's big, I think, for that one as well. And, you know, maybe we can we can assist with that with, you know, some of our offices and agencies. But as I said, this is this is an amount that's on the on the high side. And I guess I would just note that any real estate taxes that are deferred, you know, will be collected by the county at some point in time in the future when that property changes ownership. So, turning to the other funds that are included in the budget, we have five special revenue funds and one internal service fund that's outlined in this slide 15. You are taking action on on these budgets as well as the general fund. Next slide, please. In addition to that, the board will be taking action, next slide, please, Kelly, on the capital improvement program, the five-year plan, which has a budget of $166 million in 2021. As you can see, it's outlined here by by the major areas. And if you turn to the next slide, Kelly, this is a breakdown of of the revenue and expenses. I guess I would note here that the projection on a budget basis is that the capital fund will need approximately $127 million of bond proceeds to fund the 2021 capital projects. The motor vehicle registration fund projecting around $17 million. Next slide, Kelly. So, that's high-level summary on on all the budgets that you'll be taking action on today. As I mentioned, the capital plan, if adopted as as proposed, will require new money. The last time the county borrowed for the capital plan was in 2019. Those bond proceeds have been depleted, as I've noted in previous presentations. So, we are preparing for a new money bond issue. And right now, we're targeting two levels. This hasn't been finalized yet, but there's going to be two series, a Series A, which will fund the capital projects, and roughly, the target's $125 million. The road and bridges projects, which will be funded by the Series B. And debt service, you know, for that particular bond issue is 100% funded by the motor vehicle registration fund, is targeted around $18 million. We're still fine-tuning the numbers. But, you know, I think that will be in this range, and that's that's likely what will be, you know, the ultimate borrowing that will get net proceeds in in the range of $125 million for the capital fund and around $18 million for the road and bridges fund. So, this is pending board approval of the 2021 capital budget and the proposed bond ordinance that's on the agenda today. We have begun planning with bond counsel and our financial advisor. And we're, you know, steps, you know, to to get ready for the bond issue in January, which is currently targeted around January 20th. It'd be a competitive bond sale, as we've done in the past, and the closing would fall in mid-February. Upon closing, that's when the county would receive the bond proceeds. The Moody's rating presentation is scheduled for January 5th. We're in the process of getting ready for that. I would say that, you know, that will probably be a more detailed conversation than it has been in the past, and and they are very detailed to begin with, only because, you know, the county did receive CARES Act funding and various programs, you know, had been implemented with those funds, and they're going to want to know a lot about what we did with the funds. And then, you know, how has COVID-19 impacted the county and, you know, what's expected going into 2021? So, that's all I have on on the budget presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. D'Orton. So, for those of you watching, we now have before us a series of votes. The first will be on the general fund operating budget. The second will be on the six non-general fund budget budgets. The third will be on the capital fund budget. Then, there will be an ordinance to support the obligation, the general obligation bond series that Mr. D'Orton just described. And then, finally, there will be a resolution to approve the real estate tax deferral program that Mr. D'Orton described. So, I will start by moving that the Board of Commissioners of Montgomery County for the fiscal year 2021 approved the tax millage rate to be levied on all real property within the county that is subject to taxation for county purposes, shall be four and zero to two-hundredths mils on each dollar of assessed valuation. And be it further resolved that for the general fund expenses of the county totaling $461,635,125 for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, are hereby appropriated from the revenues available for the specific purposes as more fully itemized on the budget form attached and on file in the office of the county commissioner's chief financial officer. Is there a second?
I will second.
All right. So, I just want to make a few remarks about our budget today. We are voting on the proposed 2021 operating budget and capital improvement program. This budget is being proposed during a time of significant financial uncertainty facing Montgomery County and many of our residents. As we continue to battle the COVID-19 pandemic, the county's finances remain impacted, and future financial assistance is uncertain. And future financial assistance is uncertain. And I just want to emphasize that uh if any of you have been following the budget negotiations in Washington this week and the negotiations around an additional uh COVID assistance plan, what has been left out of the plan that is likely to be approved in the coming days is any direct payments to counties. And that is particularly critical as we will bear as a county uh the brunt of much of the cost of distributing the COVID vaccine, the COVID nineteen vaccine to our residents. This proposed budget represents months of planning to help us identify cost savings and important programs and services to prioritize with our constrained resources. The two thousand twenty one proposed budget continues to invest in the core functions of county government and continues to provide dedicated funding source to our Montgomery County Community College. This budget also gives us the flexibility to continue to serve Montgomery County constituents as this pandemic continues and we prepare for vaccine distribution. The proposed budget increases staff for the court's new pretrial division and supervision service division, which supports our criminal justice reform efforts. We also have plans to boost the permanent staff in our voter services office to support increased service levels, particularly those brought on by mail-in voting. We're proud that this proposed budget continues our commitment to make sure our employees earn a living wage while continuing to work for the county. If passed as proposed, this budget would allow all full-time and part-time employees to earn at least fifteen dollars per hour. The twenty twenty one capital improvement program includes one hundred and twenty seven million dollars in county funding to continue moving forward with the county campus redevelopment plan, including completion of the One Montgomery Plaza facade replacement project and the design and construction of the new county justice center. These projects will create a sustainable, forward-thinking county campus designed for the next one hundred years. This project will also result in an important local economic investment, creating jobs and procurement opportunities that will help move our county forward as we recover from the many impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Today, our county is on sound financial footing due to nine years of adhering to fiscal priorities, investing in long-term capital planning, improving our aging infrastructure, and maintaining an appropriate fund balance. County real estate taxes were last raised in two thousand seventeen and have remained flat for the past three consecutive years. In order to balance our budget, which is required by law for county governments, we're recommending a planned six point seven million dollar drawdown of our fund balance paired with a five percent real estate tax increase. The five percent increase, which equates to twenty nine dollars per year for the average homeowner, would provide approximately ten point five million dollars in new real estate revenue and keep the fund balance at eighty eight point nine million dollars or nineteen point six percent of the two thousand twenty one projected revenue. This will keep the county in a stable financial position. I want to emphasize that this five percent increase is on the county portion of property taxes only, not the taxes leveled by your local school board or your local municipality. Again, for the average homeowner, this increase represents twenty nine dollars a year. We know that this is not welcome news during a time when many people have lost their jobs or are struggling to make ends meet. And so to help ease this burden on seniors with a fixed income, we will also be voting on this real estate, real estate tax deferral program that Mr. Dertone described. This will allow eligible households to postpone the payment of increases in county property taxes on their homes. Despite this year's challenges, Montgomery County remains on sound financial footing. We continue to adhere to our fiscal priorities, invest in long-term capital planning, improve our aging infrastructure, and work to maintain an appropriate fund balance. As a result of the sound fiscal management, the county has earned a triple A bond rating from the Moody's Investors Service for the past three years. This budget continues our commitment to invest in our workforce, our infrastructure, and the delivery of services to our constituents. And I intend to vote in support of approving the proposed twenty twenty one budget and capital improvement program. And now I'll just turn over to Commissioner Lawrence for his comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this proposed budget continues investment in the core functions of county government, including our commitment to pension, the pension fund and fixing our county's aging infrastructure. Strengthening the county's pension fund has been a board priority, and sixteen point five million of funding will be provided in twenty twenty one. This is eighty nine percent of the annual required contribution. Uh, the pension fund is a commitment and a promise that we've made to our former employees and our current employees, and it is our obligation and duty uh to fund it. We're also proud to maintain our support of our regional partners and the services they provide to our residents at the twenty twenty funding levels. So these partners are the Montgomery County Child Advocacy Project, the Norristown Public Library, the Penn State Extension Program, Pottstown Area Regional Transit, SEPTA, and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Transportation remains a top funding priority for the county so that we can remain economically strong. The motor vehicle registration fee provides a dedicated source of funding to continue improving the county's roads, bridges, and intersections. Some of the major capital projects for twenty one are the Moyer Road Bridge, Davis Grove Road Bridge, Swamp Pike Bridge over Swamp Creek, the Ridge Pike Improvements, and the Road Repaving Program will all utilize a combination of federal, state, and motor vehicle registration funding. In twenty twenty one, we'll have twenty active bridge projects in design and three underway in construction in anticipation, in addition to ten anticipated to begin construction in twenty twenty one. We'll also continue to leverage state and federal grant funding by investing capital dollars in our parks, trails, and other public facilities. Our parks, trails, and historic sites have been visited by over two million people so far this year, and they've been a welcome escape for uh people as when particularly when we were under a stay-at-home order. The capital budget includes fourteen point five million dollars over five years to maintain and improve these popular destinations. These are just a few of the county investments uh that this budget will help make in addition to what uh Chair Arcoosh has already spoken about. And that's why I intend to vote in support of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Gale, do you have remarks?
Yes, thank you. This budget is comprised of higher levels of spending, higher levels of borrowing, and higher levels of taxes. As a common sense fiscal conservative, I support lower levels of spending, lower levels of borrowing, and lower levels of taxes. As far as spending, year after year, spending increases here in Montgomery County. And I pointed out when this budget was proposed, the history of an increase in spending uh over time. In two thousand fifteen, the amount of county spending was three hundred and seventy one million in the budget. This budget, the amount of spending is at is at four hundred and sixty one million. Now, you to have a true apples-to-apples comparison, you have to factor that the twenty fifteen budget included funding towards the Montgomery County Community College. Since two thousand fifteen, there has been a new property tax millage added that excludes funding from the county operating budget for the community college. So that year, it was a eighteen million dollar allocation to the community college. If you take away that eighteen million dollar allocation, that brings the operating budget in twenty fifteen down to three hundred and fif- three hundred and fifty three million. So that's an apples-and-apples increase uh comparison, an increase of a hundred and eight million dollars in six years, and that's entirely too much uh increases as far as our spending. With borrowing, in a moment on the agenda, uh there's a vote to authorize the issuance of a bond which consists of new money borrowing of a hundred and twenty five million dollars. This additional debt is needed to cover the outrageous expense of the new justice center and capital improvements at the county campus in Norristown, something I've been critical of for years, identifying it as the most expensive capital improvement project in the history of Montgomery County and have been explaining that the high level of cost is not sustainable, will lead to increased borrowing, and therefore increase taxes, and that's what's happening with this budget. And as far as taxes, five percent tax increase may not sound like a lot to my colleagues, but I believe it's a slap in the face to the residents of Montgomery County who are struggling due to draconian lockdown and shutdown of businesses, the economy, and everything else in society. The last thing we should be hitting them with are higher taxes, especially during times of economic uncertainty. The last thing we want to do is increase taxes. Tens of millions of dollars have been spent on um grant programs and loan programs to help struggling businesses and families. And those money that we're issuing through grants and loan programs are public tax dollars. And the last thing we should be doing during such difficult times where people are struggling is increasing their taxes. So I will be opposing the budget, and uh I speak for many residents that are frustrated with an endless cycle of higher spending, higher borrowing, and higher taxes, and I will continue to be a voice for them.
Well, now move to a vote. Ms. Washington, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Arcoosh?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
The budget passes. All right. Next, we will move on to the six non-general fund budgets. I will move that the following six operating budgets with expenditures as noted below are hereby adopted and that the proper county officers are authorized and directed in accordance with county purchasing regulations to expend funds in the year two thousand twenty one within the limits set forth below. Health Choices Fund, one hundred and ninety one million, two hundred and forty three thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Motor Vehicle Registration Fund, three million, twenty three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Montgomery County Community College Fund, twenty three million, four hundred and fifty seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Self Insurance Fund, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Emergency Dispatch Services or nine one one Fund, nineteen million, nine hundred and twenty four thousand, thirty six dollars. And the Liquid Fuel Tax Fund, two million, one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty five dollars. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any board comment? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Washington, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Arcoosh?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, we will vote on the two thousand twenty one capital fund budget. I will move that the capital fund budget for the two thousand twenty one fiscal year is hereby adopted in the amount of one hundred sixty five million, five hundred ninety eight thousand, forty six dollars, of which one hundred twenty seven million, eighty thousand, eight hundred fifty six dollars shall be funds of the county and be it further resolved that the proper county officials are authorized and directed to proceed with the following capital programs subject to all applicable federal Commonwealth and county laws, ordinances, regulations, and policies. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we, any additional board comment? Okay. Hearing none. Ms. Washington, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Arcoosh?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Motion carries. We will now move to the general obligation bond series A and B of two thousand twenty one as described by Mr. Dertone. Uh, I will move that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds, series A of two thousand twenty one, in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred thirty eight million dollars, as well as general obligation bonds, series B of two thousand twenty one, in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars. With the proceeds of the series A bonds funding portion of the cost of the county's ongoing five-year capital plan, including but not limited to the acquisition, construction, renovation, and capital improvements two and the acquisition and installation of equipment for various county facilities and infrastructure, including the Justice Center, the acquisition of vehicles for various county departments, the acquisition and installation of infrastructure, equipment, and fixtures for the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Corrections, projects relating to open space, parks, trails, and historic sites, the construction of renovations, improvements, and repairs to certain county-owned bridges and roads, the acquisition and installation of various information technology, infrastructure, and equipment, the county's annual commitment to Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority for certain public transportation-related capital projects in the county and various economic development programs of the county, and the proceeds of the series B bonds funding the bridge and roads projects consisting of the design, planning, acquisition, construction, and renovation of bridges and improvements to various roads throughout the county, each series paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds in a form and according to those terms and conditions which are stated in the documents that shall accompany this ordinance and shall be made publicly available and which shall be transmitted to the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any additional board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Washington?
Chair Arcoosh?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
And then the final resolution in this group is the uh vote to approve a real estate tax deferral program as described by Mr. Dertone. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby directed to establish a real estate tax deferral program for eligible Montgomery County seniors under which qualifying taxpayers may apply for and receive an annual real estate tax deferral granted under the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Defirmant Program Act, which permits for the deferral of an amount equal to the increase in real property taxes upon the homestead of the claimant. Be it further resolved that the county shall develop and distribute full guidelines for this program, which shall establish fiscal year two thousand twenty as the base rate, with this program available to all eligible real estate taxpayers for the year of two thousand twenty one and for each year thereafter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any additional board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Washington?
Chair Arcoosh?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gale?
I.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dertone, and thank you to your team for uh uh this incredible work, particularly during this very, very challenging year.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. All right, we will now move on. Uh, Mr. France, you have authorization of some planning assistance contracts.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. The Planning Commission is providing for your approval for three-year community planning assistant contract renewals for the townships of Perkyomen, Lower Providence, and Lower Southford, as well as the borough of Schwenkville. As you know, the Community Planning Assistance Program provides expert technical planning assistance for county townships and boroughs to manage complex issues and achieve community objectives. We customize our services to meet a community's specific needs and essentially the service the municipality's planning consultant. The program also includes a fifty-fifty cost-sharing structure between the municipality and the county. It's something we think of as one of the best deals in Montgomery County. Uh, we currently have thirty five municipalities uh under contract uh in this arrangement, as well as four regional planning uh contracts and initiatives. The contracts typically last three years, and the four that are before you today would be effective from January first, two thousand twenty one through December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. And the details of those costs, uh including the municipal and county shares, are in the proposed resolution. Uh, to briefly summarize, uh with Lower Providence Township, uh the municipal cost of that three-year contract would be thirty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, the work will include a new comprehensive plan for the township, as well as uh general planning services. In Perkyomen Township, uh the cost municipal cost will be thirty eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the uh services included uh will address stormwater basin retrofits and streambank, streambank stabilization, uh subdivision and land development ordinance update, uh an open space and recreational conceptual plans, stormwater ordinance update, as well as a zoning ordinance update and general services. The contract for Schwenkville Borough, uh it comes with a municipal cost share of twenty five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. and it will include an update to their subdivision and land development ordinance, an update to their borough revitalization plan, as well as general planning services. And finally, the Lower Southford Township contract comes in at a municipal cost of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, and they will be working on, we will be working on their zoning ordinance update, as well as an update to the two thousand and six open space plan and their Main Street Greenways project, as well as planning, general planning services. So that is, in summary, what we have for you today.
Great. Thank you, Mr. France. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. France. Mr. Hartman.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to quickly share my screen so I can put a map on the everyone's screen here. Bear with me. There, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Good morning again. Today, the Planning Commission is recommending the approval of a resolution seeking the county's advanced acceptance of a property donation from the Montgomery County Transportation Authority for the purpose of further extending the Schoolkill River Trail in Montgomery County. Currently, the Montgomery County Transportation Authority, or MCTA, is the owner of a two-point-four-seven-acre undeveloped tract of real estate located between Arm and Hammer Boulevard and Route four-twenty-two in Lower Potts Grove Township along the Schoolkill River. And if you look at this plan, you can see that that's the yellow parcel with the word OxyChem on it. This property, along with the adjacent two properties shown in green, owned by Montgomery County, comprise the lands that will be used to develop the final section of the Schoolkill River Trail in Montgomery County before it crosses over the river into Chester County. The offer to donate this property to the county will go in front of the Montgomery County Transportation Authority today at its 1:00 PM meeting, and it is fully anticipated that the MCTA's members will approve the donation of the property to Montgomery County. Montgomery County's acceptance of the subject property will allow the Montgomery County Open Space and Trail Section to request a one-year grant extension and maintain funding from a Pennsylvania DCNR Community Conservation Partnerships Program, or C2P2 Grant, that is due to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. In order for the grant extension request to be considered by DCNR, Montgomery County must first certify that it is the owner of the subject property. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the Montgomery County Planning Commission staff that Montgomery County accept in advance of today's MCTA meeting, the donation of the property from the MCTA for the purposes of most immediately maintaining our DCNR funding and ultimately developing the Schoolkill River Trail in Montgomery County. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby accept the donation of approximately two and a half acres located between Arm and Hammer Boulevard and Route four-twenty-two in Lower Potts Grove Township for open space and trails purposes, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Hartman, just one question. I know many of us are quite anxious to see that section of the trail completed. Do you have a timeline for when that will start to happen?
Well, our hope is, and there's actually an item on the agenda for your meeting today, to award the design contract for this portion of the Schoolkill River Trail. And that will happen, that design work will happen in 2021, and we hope to finish it by the end of next year and then move into construction from there. So construction will probably occur in 2022 to 2023.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Mr. Stein, COVID disaster declaration extension.
Yes, thank you very much. As you are all very much aware, back on March eighth of this year, you declared an emergency disaster declaration under the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code related to the COVID-19 pandemic. That, under PA law, this declaration permits the county to act quickly to respond to emergency needs, such as recent funding the county was able to provide to local food banks ahead of the holiday season when that aid was desperately needed as a result of the continued aspects, impacts of the pandemic, which would not have been possible without the disaster declaration being in place. The disaster declaration also allows the county to receive reimbursement from the Commonwealth for certain costs. And notably, since the last time we extended it, Alex Azar, the Health and Human Services Secretary for the federal government, issued an extension of the US government's own declaration through January twenty-first. So we are requesting that you authorize yet another emergency declaration for the maximum allowable sixty days.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. I will move that we, the undersigned Commissioners of Montgomery County pursuant to the provisions of Section seven-five-zero-one of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Montgomery County. Further, we direct the Montgomery County Office of Public Health and the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster emergency. This declaration shall take effect December seventh, two thousand twenty, and last for a period of sixty days. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
Just a question for Mr. Stein. Mr. Stein, does this resolution shut down or in any way restrict any businesses or schools?
Oh, no, not in the least.
No. So all this resolution does is allows us to be reimbursed for services that we are incurring due to the pandemic?
There, I mean, there are a number of options that are available to the county as a result of having this declaration in place, including allowing us to have an all-virtual meeting, such as we are having currently. But it permits the county to get reimbursement and to act quickly to respond when needs arise without having to go through certain formalities.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Washington, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Arkush.
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
I.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Stein, a Tefra.
Yes, this is a request under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-one from the Bucks County Industrial Development Authority. They are seeking to issue bonds in approximately the amount of three-hundred-and-forty million dollars for Grandview Hospital. The majority of the projects that would be funded by these bonds are in Bucks County. However, they also own the Harleysville Outpatient Center in Lower Southford, where they intend to spend about four million, seven-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars to renovate and improve that facility. So it requires the approval of the Montgomery County Commissioners, as well as the Bucks County Commissioners. There was a hearing held on November thirtieth that was publicly advertised. No members of the public had any comments. And the Bucks County Commissioners approved it at their meeting earlier this month. The only thing that awaits now is your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for Grandview Hospital. Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Stein. We'll now move on to some board and commission reappointments. The first is Aging and Adult Services. I will move that Amanda Human and Helene Fairs Broderick be reappointed to the Montgomery County Aging and Adult Services Advisory Council for a term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, the Board of Health. I will move that Michael Lane and Barbara Wadsworth be reappointed to the Montgomery County Board of Health for terms to begin on January first, two thousand twenty-one, and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and to serve at the pleasure of the commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any board comment?
I have comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Gail.
Thank you. I am disappointed and have a total loss of confidence in the Montgomery County Board of Health because of their recent unilateral decision forcing the county's public, private, and parochial schools to shut down a few weeks ago. This decision was outrageous, unacceptable, and the definition of government overreach. The Board of Health's totalitarian ruling was unwise, wreaked a partisanship, and was frankly tone-deaf to the will of the people. Concerned parents want the schools they fund with their public tax dollars or private tuition payments to remain open, and they did not seek the will of the people. I will continue to support these families who rightfully expect better and deserve better, and I will do that in one way by opposing the reappointments of these Board of Health members that made a very bad decision in recent weeks.
All right, with that, we will move to a roll call vote. Ms. Washington.
Chair Arkush.
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
I.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, the Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Board. I will move to reappoint Kathleen Arnold Yurger, Ellen Kozlowski, Rita Mandic, and Shelley Hauser to the Montgomery County Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Board to serve terms that begin January first, two thousand twenty-one, and expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the Mental Health and Intellectual Disability Act of nineteen ninety-six and the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, the Conservation District. I will move to reappoint myself, Commissioner Valerie Arkush, to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Conservation District from January first, two thousand twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, to serve as the county's representative, and to reappoint Eliza Walbridge as a farmer director from January first, two thousand twenty-one, until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Walbridge will serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the state Conservation District law. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Hearing no additional comment, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, motion carries. Next, our Drug and Alcohol Board. I will move to reappoint Larry Thebert and Patrick McElwain to serve as psychosocial representatives, and Erica Rothenberger to serve as an industry community representative to the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for terms that begin immediately and expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the Emergency Services Advisory Board. I will move that E. Hall Shwiki, M.D., be appointed as the trauma care representative to the Montgomery County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council to serve a term that begins immediately and expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the Fire Advisory Board. I will move that Richard Schwartz be appointed as the volunteer firefighter representative to the Montgomery County Fire Advisory Committee to serve a term that begins immediately and expires on December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Right. Hearing none, motion carries. Next, the Montgomery County Community College Board. I will move to reappoint Mr. Dave Craybill and Ms. Anisha Robinson Keys to the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees, her terms to begin immediately and to expire on December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
Yes, I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
All right. Ms. Washington, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Arkush.
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
I.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, the Open Space Board. I will move that Bruce Reed and Mark Fasoli be reappointed to the Montgomery County Open Space Board for terms to begin on January the first, two thousand twenty-one, and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and for them to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the Prison Board. I will move to reappoint Nancy Wyman to the Montgomery County Prison Board of Inspectors for a term that will begin immediately and will expire on December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next and final is the Workforce Development Board. I will move that Sine Stalworth be appointed and that Jason Accree be reappointed to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve terms that begin immediately and expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Before we vote on this motion, I do just want to take a moment to thank all of the individuals that serve on our county boards and commissions. Another event that went by the wayside this year was an annual breakfast that we have to thank all of our board and commission members in person. Obviously, we were not able to do that this year, but a great deal of the work of the county both depends on these boards and commissions and is informed by the members of these boards and commissions who represent all different constituencies across our county. So we are grateful. All of these boards are completely volunteered. No one is paid for their service on these boards, and I just want to personally thank each and every one of you for the service, particularly in this extremely difficult year that you have provided on behalf of Montgomery County residents and to our Board of Commissioners. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Ms. O'Malley, advertisement of RFPs and a bid.
Yes, we have an RFP on behalf of Commerce and Workforce Development for youth workforce services. The successful responder will provide a range of services for youth ages twelve through twenty-four under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act for Title One Youth. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. An RFP on behalf of Commerce and Workforce Development for Continued Career Readiness Services. The successful responder will design a career readiness program for youth The successful responder will design a career readiness program for youth ages 12 through 24 who are members of a temporary assistance for needy families' household. Contracts will be awarded to the highest rated providers. An RFP on behalf of the District Attorney for Forensic Interviewing. The successful responder will provide forensic interviewing and family and victim advocacy services for law enforcement officials investigating allegations of child sexual abuse. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated provider. An RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for an organization's structure consultant. The successful responder will provide a review of the current Health and Human Services structure and culture in a post-reorganization, current COVID-19 environment, and correlating staff engagement. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated provider. A bid on behalf of Public Safety for Landscaping Services. The successful responder will provide temporary fencing and shrubbery clearance for the Rescue World Project area. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montco PA.org/purchasing.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and a bid as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of Contract, Ms. O'Malley?
Contract award, assets and infrastructure furniture, Global Furniture Group of Marlton, New Jersey, Contract provides for furniture to revise the fit out of offices on the sixth floor of One Montgomery Plaza. Furniture is available through a PA State contract. Contract award, assets and infrastructure equipment, Vortec of Kenneworth, New Jersey, $38,672.18. Contract provides for a garage sweeper for use in county-owned parking facilities. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, coroner vehicle, New Holland Auto Group of New Holland, PA, Contract provides for a 2020 Ford Transit van with upfitting. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, court-related departments, legal research, Westlaw Online Access of St. Paul, Minnesota, $400,000. Contract provides for access of Westlaw online and print legal research resources. County users include district attorney, public defender, solicitor, and court services. Contract period is for the 2021 term. Contract award, courts, legal services, legal aid of southeastern Pennsylvania of Norristown, PA, $70,000. Contract provides legal representation for lower-income parents in juvenile court matters as well as in parental termination matters in juvenile and orphan's court for the 2021 term. Legal aid of southeastern Pennsylvania is uniquely and individually suited to provide the assistance sought by the courts. Contract award, courts, legal advocacy, Montgomery County Child Advocacy Project of Norristown, PA, $330,000. Contract provides legal advocacy representation for minors involved in juvenile court and orphan's court system for the 2021 term. Montgomery County Child Advocacy Project is uniquely and individually suited to provide the assistance sought by the courts. Contract award, courts, protection assistance, Women's Center of Montgomery County of Norristown, PA, $10,000. Contract provides assistance for county residents seeking protection from abuse orders through the Montgomery County Court System for the 2021 term. Contract award, District Attorney, vehicle, Chapman Auto Group of Horsham, PA, $30,451. Contract provides for a 2020 Jeep Grand Cherokee. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, Health and Human Services, Health Record System, Patagonia Health, Inc. of Cary, North Carolina, Contract provides for an electronic health record system for use by the Office of Public Health and in collaboration with the Department of Public Safety. RFP 2057 was viewed by 47 providers with nine responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Contract is for a period of two years with indefinitely mutually agreed upon yearly subscription renewals. Contract award, Health and Human Services, Outreach Services, Aklamo Family Centers of Norristown, PA, $30,000. Contract provides for an outreach and education provider to support the county's response and prevention efforts for COVID-19 in communities that may have members with limited English proficiency. RFP 2061 was viewed by 38 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract award, Health and Human Services Consultant, multiple providers, $34,011. Contract provides for the facilitation of a team and leadership development and project facilitation for Health and Human Services staff, consultants, and external partners involved in Health and Human Services projects. RFP 2065 was viewed by 84 providers with 11 responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest rated providers. Awarded providers, TBD Now LLC of Lansdale, PA, Public Consulting Group, Inc. of Boston, Massachusetts. Contract award, Human Resources, Healthcare Stop Loss Insurance, Swiss RE of Enfield, Connecticut, Contract provides stop-loss insurance for the county health plan, which protects the plan against individual catastrophic health claims over $325,000. Award is at the recommendation of county's benefits consultant, which determined the proposal provided the best overall economic benefit to the county. Contract will cover the period 1/1/2021 through 12/31/2021. Contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Software Maintenance, Environmental Systems Research, Inc. of Redlands, California, Contract provides software maintenance for the county's proprietary geographic information system. Contract is out for the term 12/31/2020 through 12/30/2021. Contract award, Planning Commission Consultants, Wilson Consulting Group, P.C. of McCaticver, Pennsylvania, Contract provides for the design and engineering of the Schuylkill River Trail Route 422 connection. RFP 1938 was viewed by 103 firms with 10 responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Contract award, Planning Commission Consultants, NBS, Inc. of Parsippany, New Jersey, Contract provides for a cross-county trail east feasibility study. RFP 2058 was viewed by 94 firms with 15 responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Contract award, Treasurer's Office Mailing Services, Infocom Corporation of Evansburg, Pennsylvania, Contract provides for tax claim mailing services. RFP 2059 was viewed by 42 providers with five responses received. Contract is for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Contract award, Public Safety Service, Core Power, Inc. of King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, $22,000. Contract provides for service contract for the uninterrupted power supply system at the emergency operating center. Services are available through a PA State contract. Contract award, Public Safety System Enhancements, Geographit, the Division of EVA Engineering, Inc. of Lancaster, PA, $119,000. Contract provides for enhancements of GIS services for the computer-aided dispatch system, which will integrate with the new next-generation 911 system. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, Public Safety Software, Street Smart LLC of Lexington, South Carolina, $130,000. Contract provides a software program that has real-time crime reporting capabilities, which accurately pinpoints crime patterns and incidents. Contract is for a period of one year beginning 12/1/2020. Software is proprietary. Contract renewal, assets and infrastructure, equipment rentals, multiple providers, $700,000. Contract provides for equipment rentals for road and trail maintenance necessitating heavy equipment and paving on an as-needed basis as per specification 6400. This is the first and only available renewal for the 2021 term. Providers, Floyd G. Hirsch of Green Lane, PA, Strauss Landscaping, Inc. of Schwenksville, PA, TNT Contracting, Inc. of Fairview Village, PA. Contract renewal, assets and infrastructure, trash removal, waste management of Ewing, New Jersey, $100,000. Contract provides for trash removal services for county-owned buildings. This is the third and final available of three optional annual renewals for the 2021 term. Contract renewal, District Attorney, Office of Children and Youth, Forensic Interviewing Services, Mission Kids of Bluebell, PA, $100,000. Contract provides forensic interviewing services of juvenile and victim advocacy as per RFP 1669. Renewal is for a three-month period through March 31, 2021, while new RFP is being prepared. Contract renewal, Finance, Financial Services, the PFM Group of Philadelphia, PA. Contract provides financial advising services for the county as per RFP 1660. This is an additional renewal term for the 2021 term while a new RFP is being prepared. Contract renewal, Planning Commission, Household Hazardous Waste Collection, MXI Environmental Services LLC of Abington, Virginia, $550,000. An RFP was issued by Philadelphia on behalf of Bucks, Chester, Delaware, and Montgomery Counties. Contract provides household hazardous waste collection events throughout the county per the proposed cost schedule. This is the second of three available optional annual renewals for the 2021 term. Contract renewal, Recorder of Deeds, Index Verification, Codified, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, $60,000. Contract provides for verification of accurate indexing information on recorded documents in the Recorder of Deeds office. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure, Fire Suppression System, Johnson Controls of Boca Raton, Florida, $4,256. Contract provides for the demolition replacement of the current fire suppression system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for final reconciliation of additional costs necessitated by emergency repairs to the electrical system and removal of newly installed sprinkler infrastructure to enable repair of electrical items required by Johnson Controls to provide four additional days of reinstallation labor. Contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure, Engineering, Aurora and Associates, P.C. of Harrisburg, PA, Contract provides for preliminary engineering, final design, and construction consultation for the rehabilitation of County Bridge 27, Fetter's Mill Road over Penny Pad Creek in Lower Moreland Township. Amendment provides for additional utility coordination required with PICO and Aqua to relocate the facilities off of the bridge, updates to the right-of-way plans, handout specifications, and the environmental document. Contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure, Construction, Loftus Construction, Inc. of Cinnamons in New Jersey, Contract provides for construction services for the replacement of County Superstructure Bridge Number 274, Henry Road over West Branch of Burkhaman Creek in Douglas Township. Amendment provides for paving of additional roadway on Henry Road leading to the bridge required by Douglas Township. Contract amendment, Voter Services, Printing and Mailing Services, NPC, Inc. of Clayesburg, PA, Contract provides for ballot printing and mailing services for the 2020 general election. Amendment provides for postage costs, additional provisional ballots, and printing needed for the presidential election. Contract amendment, Voter Services, Moving Services, Clemmer Moving and Storage, Inc. of Telford, PA, $25,440. Contract provides for the transport of election equipment to and from the various election districts within the county for the 2020 primary and general elections. Amendment provides for moving services for additional equipment required for the presidential election. Contract amendment, Voter Services Supplies, William Penn Printing Company of Pittsburgh, PA, Contract provides for Election Day supply boxes for the 2020 primary and general elections. Amendment provides for additional supplies required for the presidential election. There's one contract, 23 contract renewals, and seven amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are available on our county website.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I request that you separate Contract Amendment Number 29 on the agenda, Voter Services, Printing and Mailing Services. I'd like to have that as a separate vote.
Okay, I will entertain that request. So, I will restate to move to approve contracts number 1 through 28 and 30 through 32 as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And now I will move to approve Award of Contract Number 29 as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Gail, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. This contract amendment more than doubles the original contract for printing and mailing services related to the 2020 general election. I oppose the original contract, and I will be opposing this contract amendment. It's an example of why universal mail-in voting is problematic and also why it's so ridiculously expensive to execute. So, I will need a roll call vote on this amendment.
Any other comments?
No, no comment.
Okay, hearing none, Ms. Washington?
Commissioner Lawrence, you can laugh about it, but I think spending over a million dollars on printing and mail-in services for the general election is outrageous, and I believe many taxpayers agree with me. So, for you to laugh, for you to laugh...
Commissioner Gail, I think helping people to vote is the right thing to do. I'm in favor in franchising our citizens.
Well, I think you can vote and also protect taxpayers at the same time. And it's very insulting that you laugh, that you had to interrupt the meeting to laugh about it.
You should have a better comment then. Have a better comment.
Yeah, well, hold your laughter, because it's insulting.
If you don't say things that are funny, I won't laugh.
Okay. Say that to the taxpayers.
Chair Arkush?
I.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I.
Commissioner Gail?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. All right, Ms. O'Malley, awards of contract under the emergency procurement for COVID-19.
Commissioner, contracts provide for the various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Dear &amp; Company of Cary, North Carolina, Contract provides for a John Deere 4052M Heavy Duty Compact Utility Tractor for Norristown Farm Park. Response Equipment, Office of Children and Youth, Educational Furniture Solutions of Norristown, PA, Contract provides for waiting room furniture for family visitations. Response Equipment, Singer Equipment Company, Inc. of Elverson, PA, Contract provides for kitchen equipment and smallware kitchen items for the YWCA and HSC project. Response Equipment, Singer Equipment Company, Inc. of Elverson, PA, $24,745. Contract provides for walk-in refrigeration unit installation for the educational program project at Norristown Farm Park. Response Equipment, Multiple Providers, $41,043.75. Contract provides for laptops and tablets for the educational program project at Norristown Farm Park. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Providers are Southern Computer Warehouse of Marietta, Georgia, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois. Response Equipment, Courts, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, Contract provides IT equipment for the county's pretrial services initiative. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Kirchner Office Furniture of King of Prussia, PA, Contract provides for outdoor furniture for One Montgomery Plaza. Response Equipment, Multiple Departments, Corbett, Inc. of Norristown, PA, Contract provides for social distancing furniture and barriers for various Montgomery County building locations. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response Equipment, Information and Technology Solutions Software, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, Contract provides for additional Microsoft licenses for contact tracers and other essential personnel. Response Equipment, Public Safety, Greystone Equipment Company of Ambler, PA, $29,708. Contract provides for installed shelving at the Public Safety Warehouse. Response Equipment, Public Safety, Motorola, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, Contract provides for radios and accessories for five new public safety vehicles. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response Equipment, Public Safety, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, Contract provides for mobile data computers for public safety vehicles. Equipment is available... Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response Equipment, Public Safety, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. Contract provides for remote work kits for county employees. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response Equipment, Public Safety, AccuTech IHS, Inc. of Cleves, Ohio, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Contract provides for four respiratory face mask fit testing machines to be housed at public safety and offered for use to nineteen Montgomery County EMS agencies. Response Equipment, Public Safety Vehicle, New Holland Ford of New Holland, PA, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Contracts provide for two thousand and twenty Ford Expedition for Emergency Services. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Response Services, Assets and Infrastructure, Electrical Service, SJ Thomas, Inc. of Lansdowne, PA, thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Contract provides for improvements to the access system to the juror parking lot. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Tape Towers Manufacturing of Lititz, PA, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Contract provides for protective plexiglass barriers for various county offices and public areas. Response Services, Public Safety Vehicle Upfits, nine-one-one Rapid Response LLC of Anvil, PA, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents. Contract provides for upfitting services for two new emergency operating center logistics vehicles. Upfits include lighting, graphics, and control systems. Response Equipment, Security, CAUSA LTD of Twinsburg, Ohio, fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars. Contract provides for three temperature-scanning metal detectors with accessories and installation for use at various county facilities. Equipment is available through a PA State contract. Response Supplies, Food, Driscoll Foods of Clifton, New Jersey, one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Contract provides for food to be distributed by Montgomery County Food Pantries to residents in need. Response Services, Tribe County Community Network of Pottstown, PA, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Contract provides for food distribution logistical support for the Montco Food Pantry Assistance Program Project. Response Supplies, Masks, Office Service Company of Reading, PA, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Contract provides for disposable filter masks for use by Office Public Health, Public Safety, and Acclamo. Response Supplies, Masks, Elite Sportswear Products of Soderton, PA, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Contract provides for five thousand fabric masks in various sizes for county employees. Response Supplies, Early Learning Resource Center, Safewear, Inc. of Lanham, Maryland, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Contract provides for COVID safety kits. COVID response kits will be distributed to Montgomery County Child Care Centers. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Freestanding Greenhouse, Happy Construction LLC of Gordonville, PA, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Contract provides for installation of a thirty-by-sixty freestanding greenhouse at Norristown Farm Park. This is a component of the county-approved Food Security Assistance and Workforce Development Program. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Stolfa Structures LLC of Bat Glen, PA, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Contract provides for installation of twenty-eight-by-thirty timber-framed pavilion at Norristown Farm Park. This is a component of the county-approved Food Security Assistance and Workforce Development Program. Response Equipment, Assets and Infrastructure, Pink Green LLC of Glenside, PA, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Contract provides for installation of timber-framed pavilion footings and cold storage box concrete pad at Norristown Farm Park. This is a component of the county-approved Food Security Assistance and Workforce Development Program. The pavilion will be utilized as the workforce training area and community programming. The cold storage box will store the fresh fruits and vegetables for distribution to countywide food pantries and the YWCA kitchen. Response Amendment, Commerce, Printing Services, Papermark, Inc. of East Hanover, New Jersey, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Contract provides for COVID nineteen printed material to be included in twelve thousand COVID nineteen business kits to be distributed to Montgomery County businesses. Amendment provides for additional COVID kit print items. Services are available as per Southeastern Pennsylvania County's Cooperative Purchasing Board Cooperative Agreement. Response Amendment, Commerce, Safewear, Inc. of Lanham, Maryland, one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Contract provides for COVID kits to be distributed to Montgomery County businesses on behalf of the Commerce Department. Amendment provides for additional office-building PPE kits to be distributed to Montgomery County businesses. Response Services Amendment, Whit O'Briens LLC of Washington, DC, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Contract provides for emergency management consultation and advisory services for federal cost recovery reimbursement related to the COVID nineteen emergency. Amendment provides for additional advisory, administration, and close-out services for the CARES Act.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, let's move to a roll call vote, please, Ms. Washington.
Chair Arkush?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Aye.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Awards of Contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Ms. O'Malley.
Yes. Contract Award Training, WMD Tech LLC of Boise, Idaho, sixty-four thousand dollars. Contract provides for specialized bomb disposal unit training for bomb disposal unit operators for the regional counties. Training is proprietary. Contract Award Software, Plate Logic LLC of Downingtown, PA, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Contract provides for automatic license plate reader equipment for Chester County. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract Award Training, Navigate Three-Sixty LLC of Medina, Ohio, twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Contract provides for threat assessment training for the regional counties. Training is proprietary. Contract Renewal Managed Services, Mission Critical Partners of Port Matilda, PA, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Contract provides managed services and server hosting for the Automatic License Plate Reader Program for the regional counties. Services are available through a GSA contract. Contract term is three-one, two thousand and twenty-one through two-two-eight, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any closing commissioner comments?
I have closing comments.
Okay.
Thank you. I've been contacted by several county employees, as well as many county residents, that share my disappointment in the official cancellation of Columbus Day as an official county holiday. This is something I disagreed with. As a someone of Italian heritage, I'm very proud of my heritage, and also as a member of the Knights of Columbus, which I'm also very proud to be a member of. I find this very insulting, and I know many residents and employees within Montgomery County do as well. Specifically, Norristown, the county seat for Montgomery County, has a deep, rich heritage of prominent, hard-working Italian families. And it's a shame that this move to cancel Columbus Day as an official county holiday is purely political. It has nothing to do with being in sync with county school districts, school districts within the county to have, be on the same page as far as calendars. It's a political stunt, and it's also part of cancel culture. And I find it very insulting, just like I found it very insulting that Commissioner Lawrence had the nerve to laugh during a meeting where the residents of Montgomery County and during a pandemic are being hit with a tax increase. And I have every right to criticize over a million dollars in expense related to mail-in ballots and printing services for the general election. So the insults continue, whether it's our heritage, whether it's our taxpayer dollars. It's very a shame, and I know I speak for many. So I'd like to close with that comment.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, I will remind everyone that our next meeting will be January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Very likely to be in this format or something very similar to it, but we will make sure to publicly announce the format for that next meeting. And with that, I will move to adjourn the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move on to Salary Board. Looking for Controller Sanchez, who is right there. Great. Good morning or good afternoon, actually, at this point, Controller.
Good afternoon.
And Ms. Pardue, I see you there. All right, I think we are ready.
Good afternoon, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, with a timestamp of eleven thirty-seven AM. Of note, we have six retirees. Barbara Cipollars from Quartz after ten years, Eileen Grant from Quartz after thirty-three years, Paula Schumacher from District Justice after fifteen years, Willie Mae Bell from the Health Department after twenty years, Thomas Sullivan from Public Safety after eighteen years, Bruce Kaiser from Security after sixteen years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pardue. I will move to approve the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty Salary Board presentation as given by the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. I know we have some special guests today, and we do have two motions today on Salary Board. So why don't we move through our official business, and then we'll be happy to take some comments. Any other board comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Pardue, do you have any comment on the second motion, or I can just proceed with that?
You can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will move that effective January first, two thousand and twenty-one, except as restricted by statute or otherwise by Resolution ninety-four dash C seven-five-six or Resolution oh-six dash C two-nine-zero relating to the salaries of certain elected officials. A pay increase of two and three-quarters percent be granted to all qualified full-time and part-time employees. Qualified full-time and part-time employees for the purposes of this resolution excludes those employees who are members of a bargaining union, including those employees subject to a quote "status quo" unquote requirement, elected officials, employees otherwise covered by a separate agreement or resolution, and those employees who are active in the retirement process. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment?
I have a comment, Madam Chair. You began our meeting talking about the dedication of our employees and their hard work all the time, but particularly this year. I am pleased that even in these tough economic times, we are able to provide them an increase. They deserve this. They work tirelessly for our county residents each and every day. And I know we're still playing catch-up with regards to some of our surrounding counties. So I will always vote to invest in our employees.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll just quickly ask if there's any public comment on Salary Board. Ms. Francisco, are we aware of any public comment for Salary Board?
It does not appear we have any.
Okay, great. Then Ms. Pardue, I know we have some guests today, so why don't we hear from them?
We do. First, I would like to introduce Warden Algarin's, some of his senior staff, who have some comments to make, and then we will follow with the Warden's comments.
Good morning, everyone. Sean McGee here, Deputy Warden. I just wanted to state it's been an honor and privilege to work with Warden Algarin. Forty-five years of service with the county is definitely a long time of service. With that, covers a lot of correctional knowledge and information, so his leadership and guidance will surely be missed. And I just wish him all the best in his future endeavors and in his retirement. Maybe I just want to say.
All right. Warden, I hope you heard my comments earlier at the beginning of the meeting. If not, you'll have to just go back and watch them. Do any of my colleagues have any comments they'd like to share before we invite the Warden to speak?
I'd like to thank the Warden for his forty-five years of service to the county. I want to thank him personally for all that he taught me since I've become a commissioner. We're losing a great county asset here, a great man, but I wish you Godspeed and all the best. You've definitely earned it. If not before, but certainly through the pandemic, during the early days of this, and throughout, you have been steadfast. And Warden, one of the signs is your people love you. I've never heard one of your employees say a cross word about you. So thank you for all your service, Godspeed, and stay well.
Thank you.
I too, Warden, would like to congratulate you and thank you for your many years of service to Montgomery County. I truly admire your leadership skills that you brought. As Commissioner Lawrence said, you're a tremendous asset to Montgomery County, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. I hope you enjoy many years of good health and happiness during your retirement. And again, thank you on behalf of all the residents of Montgomery County for your service.
I also wanted to thank you for your many years of service, forty-five years. That's a crazy long time to work at the county, so thank you so much, and I wish you many years of happy retirement. Thanks.
And Warden, I know that your wife is very excited about you finally deciding to retire. I recall a luncheon, it was probably one of the last luncheons that we were able to go to before COVID hit, where I was sitting next to you, you were receiving an award from the Bar Foundation, and overheard her comment about you retiring this year, which that was news to me at the time. So I know how excited and eager she is to have you at home. So again, thank you so much. As I said, I made pretty lengthy comments at the start of our commissioners' meeting when I announced the reaccreditation at the correctional facility. So I hope you take a chance to listen to those, but we would invite you to speak and share any thoughts that you have with us.
Commissioner, I thank you. I was listening to your comments, very kind words. I certainly appreciate it. And commissioners, I appreciate all your support throughout the years. This county is unique in the state of Pennsylvania. I've traveled around, and I've spoken to a lot of other departments, a lot of other prisons, and the cooperation that you instill and the Board of Judges instill in all the department heads and all the departments is fantastic. I mean, we really do it better. And all these years, it doesn't seem like forty-five years, but it is. And it's my time to just sail into the sunset or whatever. But you have to thank, I have to thank the people that I've worked with in the past and present. I couldn't be a better Warden without their help and without their assistance, without their input. And trust me, they've told me when I'm wrong, and they've told me when I'm completely off-base, and I appreciate that. And I know everyone calls me Warden, but my name is Julio, and I've never been a person for titles. And I certainly appreciate, and it's been an honor to serve the residents of Montgomery County. I'm proud of Montgomery County. I'm proud of all of you, especially the way you've led this facility and this county through this crisis. My staff appreciates your confidence, and I thank every single member of my staff. Thank you very much, so much. Goodbye.
Thank you. We all wish you the very, very best. All right, Ms. Pardue.
Next, we have Mike Vest, who has a few words about Mr. Sullivan.
So it's an honor to be here today. I did hear Commissioner Arkush's words at the very beginning in honor of Director Sullivan, and I couldn't really top that, but I do just want to add a couple of things. There are others that wanted to say something but thought they would get a little too emotional, so they decided to keep it professional and just have me be the spokesperson. But Director Sullivan has been a leader, a great leader, a great mentor, a counselor, and a friend to all, and a father figure to some. He's really done a lot to bring the department out of the Dark Ages, through the Middle Ages, the Renaissance, into this bleeding edge of technology. We've done a lot. We've accomplished a lot, accreditations and other things. So Tom, as well as Julio, gets to say a lot. So Tom, as well as Giulio, gets to sail off into the sunset. Hopefully, he'll be able to enjoy his days of retirement. I believe he's going to open up a popcorn stand on the boardwalk, Sullivan's Popcorn. So if anybody's down there, grab a beer and some popcorn. I'm sure Giulio will be there, too, and a shout-out to Giulio as well. Well-deserved retirement. I know the Department of Public Safety has co-located here, and a great rapport with them, and hopefully to continue that rapport. But Director Sullivan, we appreciate the dedicated service that you provided to the department, and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Vest. Any of my colleagues wish to share any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, the word that comes to mind when I think of you is unflappable. I've literally never seen you sweat. We've been in rooms where emotions run high, and you always keep an even keel and always bring it back to solving the problem. You know we weren't going to let you go if the radio system didn't work. So I'm glad that you got that done and get out the door. But I know that you worked tirelessly on that. Just so many things, and once again, so many things that you've taught me since I've been a commissioner. So thank you. Your reputation around the county is superb when we interact with police chiefs or the other agencies that you act with, Southeastern Conference. You will truly, truly be missed. We hope to see you around, but once again, Godspeed. I will come down and buy some popcorn from you. But thank you for all the work you've done for Montgomery County, and once again, particularly in this past year. If you wanted to go out with a bang, this pandemic has certainly done it. And you helped us so much during the early days of this and up until today, in keeping us together and focused us always on solving the problems and fixing solutions. So thank you, Tom, for all your work. You will truly be missed.
Director Sullivan, congratulations. I too would like to thank you for your many years of cool, calm, collected, steady leadership in Montgomery County. I had the honor and opportunity to see that firsthand in action all year here in 2020 during the pandemic. You were critical during this year in your leadership position, and I know many feel the same way. So I wish you all the best, and I hope you, your wife and your daughters, get to spend more time in Ocean City, New Jersey now that you'll be retired. And I wish you, again, health and happiness in your retirement. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for your years of service, and I look forward to Sullivan's popcorn when things can open back up again on the boardwalk. So, thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you. I couldn't ask for a better neighbor. You've been very helpful to us at Montgomery County Correction Facility. You will be missed. I can't think of anyone better to work alongside with. Thank you, Tom.
Giulio, if you could hold on just for a little longer, I already commissioned the 50-year PIN, which we hadn't had to make before, but.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just maybe tie it up with expressing some sincere and personal gratitude to you both. I mean, you both work and lead in the sort of the no-news-is-good-news departments. And so most of your work, as you know, and your team knows, goes totally unnoticed, which is generally a good thing. But I know it is often thankless. And, you know, good news for long periods of time is sometimes hard to come by. But the two of you have, through your commitment to public service, and really just living that through and through, and I think your optimism, both of you, for what is possible, has just made it a complete and total pleasure to work with you both. And you guys have led by example every step of the way, and you've built teams that emulate the energy and the forward-looking, positive attitudes that you guys have. So you've always, as Giulio said, your team points out, you know, when you're a little bit off the mark, neither of you have been shy to point out when I am or we are. And I've always appreciated it. You've always wanted and have done the right thing, and always for the right reasons. You've always had your team's backs, which I've appreciated and respected. And somehow, through all of it, especially even this year, somehow, you've managed to to put gas in everybody's tanks with the humor that gets us all through the day. So thank you, and you guys are great and all. However, the mark of the great leadership that you guys have brought to the county for so many years is that your team that you're leaving in place here is ready, willing, and able to pick up the ball or pass the baton, or whatever it is when we do, when we still have to wake up every morning early. So that's a complete and total reflection on the both of you of what you've built and the good hands you're leaving the county in. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, and Director Sullivan, I'll see if I can work any magic with the New Jersey Department of Health when you get ready to open up that popcorn stand. I'll have your back on that.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
So, good afternoon. Thank you really for this opportunity to acknowledge and thank this Board of Commissioners, Lee, your entire staff, and Mike for the kind words. And I want to take a chance, an opportunity to thank Giulio. He's kind of been the mayor of our little complex up here, a great partner and friend, and we certainly connected by with the after-support and help of Giulio and his staff. It's a great partnership we have. I want to take a moment, too, just to acknowledge and recognize all the first responders, the municipal officials, police, fire, and EMS. We develop strong partnerships, great relationships, and I'm grateful for that as well. Believe it or not, I've loved coming to work every day. I still do. Not so fond of those 5:30 a.m. snow calls, Lee, but other than that, it's been what I consider to be a privilege. It sounds cliche, but it is a privilege and an honor to serve this county, to serve the various Boards of Commissioners over the years. And I've enjoyed it. I'm proud of it. We have a great team here. They have a reputation of being second to none. And I think you can be confident that that's an accurate statement. So I'm grateful. Thank you all, and I hope to see you in Ocean City. Thanks again.
All right. Well, thank you all so much, and warmest wishes to everyone for the holiday season, and stay safe out there, and hopefully we'll see you all soon. All right, so with that, I will move to adjourn the December 17. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt. I do believe that we have a video that Judge Murphy recorded with comments regarding Eileen Graham's retirement.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah, you are absolutely correct, and I am remiss in forgetting about that. Do you have that, Ms. Pardue?
I do not.
I'll be sharing it. Just one moment. Okay, great. Can everyone see the video?
Now, we can.
You can? Okay.
Good morning. I'm Judge Lois Murphy. Thank you for inviting me to address you briefly in honor of Eileen Grant, an exemplary Montgomery County staff member. Eileen has decided to enjoy her well-earned retirement beginning on December 24, after an incredible over 36 years of valuable service to the families of Montgomery County. Eileen has a keen intellect, a pithy writing style, and has always brought compassion, humanity, and a sense of humor to her work as a senior staff attorney in the Court of Common Pleas Orphans Court Division. Before working directly with me, Eileen worked as a staff attorney to the late Judge Louis Stephan and to Judge Stanley R. Ott, two pillars of our Montgomery County bench, who were clearly well-served and supported by Eileen's excellent work. Eileen has drafted opinions too numerous to count on topics ranging from nonprofit governance, contempt of court, inheritance, interpretation of wills and trusts, adult guardianships, and adoptions. She has left an indelible mark on the lives of many Montgomery County families, and she has been a reliable font of knowledge and source of wisdom for Orphans Court judges and our staff. We will sorely miss Eileen, her intelligence, her sense of humor, and her sparkling wardrobe. She leaves big shoes to fill and a large collection of shoes at that. But she also leaves a legacy of hard work, compassion, and intellectual rigor that has set a standard we will all strive to continue. Please join me in wishing Eileen well. Eileen, we will miss you.
All right. Well, that was lovely. Thank you to Judge Murphy. I'm sorry you couldn't be here in person, but it was so nice of you to send that. Okay, anything else, Ms. Pardue?
That is all.
Terrific. Thank you. And with that, then, I will move to adjourn the December 17, 2020, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Sanchez. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.